Regular meeting of the city council to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Turco?
Here.
Councilmember Dobie?
Here.
Councilmember Gross?
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Here.
We will have, Councilmember Hasselbrink will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
All right, if you can stand with me and it looks like we have a flag on Wendy's screen, and if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance, ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am Tater Republic, which stands under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice of our
I heard this prayer the other day, "Through a great personal risk of sparing no expense, I found it," called Prayer for a Pandemic. "May those who are merely inconvenienced remember those whose lives are at stake. May we who have more risk factors remember those who are most vulnerable. May we have the luxury of, may we who have the luxury of working from home, respect and support those who must choose between preserving their health and paying their rent. May we who have flexibility to care for our children when the schools close, remember those who have no option. May we who have to cancel our trips remember those who have no place to go. May we who are losing our investments remember those who have no money to invest. May we who settle in for quarantine at home remember those who have no home. During this time when we cannot physically wrap our arms around each other, let us find ways to be the most loving, embrace humanity to our neighbors. Be aware, be accepting, be supportive, and be kind. Thank you." We'll go to oral communications. Wendy?
As listed on the agenda, members of the public were requested to submit their request to speak via email. We received one request to speak from Barb Ringhofer. One moment Barb, while I unmute your microphone, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council. Barb, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, you have three minutes to address the council.
Hey, hi, hi, I'm Barbara Hofer, I'm a resident of Rossmore Highlands, and I'd like to speak on the, on 10A. Ordinance for elimination of large family daycare home regulation. Parking for a large family daycare can be a huge public inconvenience and a safety issue. Currently, a small family drop-off has clients that park in front of others' houses or across the sidewalk. There is no designated parking in the driveway or on the street. If a large family daycare is left unregulated for parking and drop-off, the entire block can have up to nine to 12 additional cars dropping off and pick up, and close to times when current residences are going to take their children to school or going to work. This can be a safety issue, as clients will be parking up to several houses away and walking past driveways as current residents are pulling out of their driveways to work and school. Thus, without our local ordinance of parking and drop-off for large family daycare, there will be a public inconvenience and a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you for taking time to speak with us.
Excuse me, Mayor. Wendy, somebody sent you an email requesting to speak tonight, did you not receive that email?
The email from Ms. Ringhofer was the only email I received for a request to speak. She's also the only resident we have participating in the call right now.
Okay, all right, I was told that he sent you an email, all right.
And I just triple-checked the emails, and that is, that was the only request we've received.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to council announcements. Shelley?
No, good, just hanging out and taking a day at a time.
Good for you. Tanya?
I have my first formalized vector Zoom meeting, I think Wednesday of this week, so I may have something to share the next time we come together.
Thank you. Dean?
One moment, he's muted.
Okay. Nothing to share today. Thank you Dean. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing to report today, I hope everyone is doing okay.
Also, I have very little to report, a lot of mayor's meetings, about four a week, phone calls, but would like to encourage people to shop locally and help our merchants out. City manager with us?
Yes sir, sorry, audio cut out there for a second. Just along the lines of what you just said with regards to small businesses or shopping local, staff spent much of the weekend, and I'll obviously give a lot of credit to Ron and Evelyn for pulling together essentially a business resource guide that will be able to, our businesses will be able to use in order to help them safely reopen once the restrictions have been lifted. This runs through a gamut of different information points of what exactly they need to be anticipating, what they need to be planning for, training for their employees, different places where they can locate that training, and then also different guidelines that have come from the CDC, as well as things that have been developed here locally with the Orange County Business Council. So I just wanted to say that obviously we're continuing to do a lot with regards to city operations, ensuring that, you know, the lights stay on, and that when you pick up the phone and you call the police, officers show up. But we also are trying to see what kind of resources we can put out there for our business community, so that they can start the planning process for when they're able to reopen. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Onto the warrants. Any questions or may I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Turco?
Hi.
Councilmember Dobie?
Hi.
Councilmember Gross?
Hi.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Hi.
Consent calendar, off consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Anybody like to pull anything? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move.
I will second. Roll call, vote for that please.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Dobie?
Hi.
Councilmember Gross?
Hi.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Hi.
That passes. Onto a public hearing. Ordinance number 2020-03, State Mandated Elimination of Large Family Daycare Home Regulation. You want to start, Chet?
Sure, sir, I'm actually going to hand over the lion's share of the presentation to Michael, just to say that this is a state mandate, not something that was thought up here locally. Michael, I'll let you take it away.
Fair enough. Thank you both. Before the city council for your consideration this evening, is the ordinance amending the Los Alamos Municipal Code for consistency with the recently enacted SB 34. By way of history, the city, or the state rather, has traditionally different, actually I'm hearing a lot of feedback, are you all hearing me well?
Yes, we're fine.
Sounds good, okay. So, the state has historically made a distinction between large and small family daycare homes. And when we're talking about these family daycare homes, this is not to be confused with a commercial academy or daycare center, this is more along the lines of a home where the primary provider lives within the residence, and during typically working hours will provide and care for children within their home. The small family daycare units were defined to be, you know, homes that would help children or work with children totaling up to eight in number, whereas the large family daycare centers would be those that take care of up to 14 children. Again, historically, state law had differentiated between the two, as to the small family daycare, state law said this is a residential use permitted by right. Anyone in a residential district can open their home to provide these services without being subject to any type of local licensing or discretionary land use review, or any other sort of additional regulations. By contrast, cities were allowed to enact regulations that dealt directly with the large family daycare centers, and this goes along the lines of, you know, one of the public comments we had this evening, talking about parking standards or different requirements for queuing of vehicles, things along those lines. As it turns out with SB 34, the distinction between the large and the small centers has now been removed, which means the city is compelled to treat these large family daycare centers as a residential use that's permitted by right and not subject to any type of additional licensing or zoning controls and regulations. So, the ordinance before you this evening goes to that end, it amends the municipal code so that it's consistent with the current state law on this issue, so it's largely a cleanup effort, just to make sure that we don't have provisions in our code any longer that directly conflict with the law as amended by SB 34. And with that, I'll open up to any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Anybody?
Michael, I've got a question, so this means that a house can have 14 children in it, and they don't even need to have a business license?
That is correct.
And Michael, just to confirm, a house includes a condo, correct?
Yes, SB 234 included language clarifying that these uses can be established in essentially any residential dwelling, so that can be a single-family home, that could be a town home, you know, as a little sneak peek further into our agenda, that may even be an accessory dwelling unit.
And as our only speakers pointed out earlier, all parking requirements are also non-existent, correct?
That is correct.
So, is it correct we cannot pass any, we cannot regulate these at all?
At that level, that is correct. Any attempt to regulate these uses through land use controls would only be permissible if we impose the exact same limitations for every other residential use in that particular zoning district. Our prior code had additional regulations relating to playground equipment, I think there were requirements for parking or queuing of vehicles, all of that stuff is no longer enforceable and lawful based on SB 234.
Do we know how many of these businesses we have in the city, whether they're small or large, I don't know, if you, if we have any information on that?
Just from a standpoint, Leslie, Michael, feel free to jump in, or Tom, but with regards to the fact that they don't have to register now, we're going to be in a tough position to actually be able to keep track of them going forward. It's largely becoming an unregulated space.
Yeah, as far as, the large ones were registering, I mean, have we had many of these registering before for residential purposes?
Tom, Leslie?
We've only had one before, and then we also disallowed one that was applied a couple of years ago, it's not, not a giant amount that applied for business.
Okay. If we have, if, if we have one of these homes and there's traffic going in and out, and people are blocking other residents' driveways, I mean, maybe chief, is there something that residents should be doing, or, you know, should they be calling the PD just because their driveway is being blocked day in and day out, or, what would you recommend?
Yeah, I think that if anybody's, well, for one, it's against the law to completely block somebody's driveway, I'm not talking about maybe sticking in to the apron of a driveway, that it can still pass, but if they're blocking it, it's actually against the law to do that, and we can go out there and cite them for doing that. Certainly, if it becomes an issue for us, and we become aware of that issue, we could actually do some patrol checks, because it's a benefit of measure to be out there and just kind of looking to see if people are parking that way, or causing any kind of traffic hazard, and then cite them if it's, if it's a citable offense, or, or warn them, you know, or try to get compliance by telling them to, you know, park their cars and not, but any, but they're public streets, so they can pub, park, unless it's permit parking, you know, only, they can pretty much park anywhere they want, you know, on a public street.
Yeah. I had one resident tell me that they're having these issues with just a small daycare, and they're worried about what's going to happen if the daycare expands to larger daycare, so maybe I'll, I'll give you the address, chief, and this resident has told me that their, their driveway is blocked every morning when the daycare is in operation, and they can't get out to get to work, to get to, to drop their kids off at school, so it's a concern.
Yeah, we'll look into it if you give us the address.
Okay. They still need to be licensed through the state as a daycare, correct?
That, that is accurate, the state will still have oversight and licensing authority for the, for these centers.
So, so if we have a daycare that's unlicensed through the state, we can certainly have them patrol it? I mean, my, my concern is if you've got a daycare of 14 children, that's probably going to be three to four employees, based on the age of the children of the daycare, that are going to be parking there all day long in these residence, Monday through Friday, from seven in the morning to six at night, and if we don't comply with this ordinance, as usual, we'll get sued, so we really don't have any say in this, but kind of makes sense to have a parking permit program now.
I think it's something to be looked at, especially as the schools and districts get ready to roll out what school's going to look like next year, because daycare might be open business, so I might know if they're going to be rolling out any additional information, or if it's just kind of, this is the new loophole to jump in, but I could totally see it being a problem, because I just got off of a PTA call where they were trying to figure out how we're even going to do school and what childcare will look like.
And if I could open up my home with 14 children, that's quite an income, so I just want to make sure that they're going through the rigorous state process to get licensed and trained and, and everything else, since we can't regulate it, let's turn the state on this.
This isn't much different than the sober living homes in the same thing, the state controls all of that as well, it's just that they don't have the cars.
Well, and with the sober living homes, they can't have more than six beds.
And if you, if you live near a school, like I do, it doesn't make any difference, morning, afternoon, they'll block your driveway, and if the police are called, they just ask them to move along, so there's, there's no penalty, it's if they get out of the car and leave the car blocking the driveway. There's, there's really no penalty involved in doing that. Michael, I believe when you were speaking the first time, you said something about all houses must have the same regulations?
Yeah, what I meant by that is that the only way you can impose any type of additional parking restrictions or development standards would be if those new standards uniformly applied to every other residential use in that zoning district. So, so for example, we would not be able to enact an ordinance saying a single-family residence used for a large family daycare center must have, you know, a driveway ribbon capable of queuing up to six cars at a time off the right of way, unless you had that exact same requirement for every single-family residence in that zoning district.
What would be the problem with that, since there probably wouldn't be anybody else using that?
If I'm not being clear, what I'm trying to communicate is that whether or not you were operating a large family daycare center, you would still have to have the same queuing capability at your single-family residence.
So I think, Tanya, an example would be, so we, we say that, you know, you have to have a queue up of six cars in your driveway, that would mean that my house, because I'm in R1, would have to have six cars queued up in the driveway, whether or not I'm offering a daycare, all homes have to be treated equally.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's correct, thank you.
Okay.
Gotcha, alright.
So, Michael, this is, state law requires us to find that the ordinance would not be detrimental to the public convenience, health, interest, safety, or welfare of the city, that's, that's a finding we have to make?
Those, those findings are required by our Muni Code for any time the council asks to amend the Muni Code. So, what we've attempted to do is draft it in a way that council can stomach, notwithstanding possible concerns you may have about the fact that this law, in essence, takes away a lot of your abilities to ensure public health and safety.
Yes, I mean, some, when this sort of stuff happens, and the ADU as well, and sober living and all of that, sometimes I wonder why we have a city council, and why we have a local government, because the state of California is just telling us what to do, and we can't do anything about it, regardless of what it does to our city, of, of the characteristics of our city, of, you know, how different our city is from so many of the other cities that the legislators have in mind when they're passing these, they're thinking of San Francisco, of LA, of, of different places, when they're passing all these ordinances, they're not thinking of little cities like ours, little suburban cities, so it's really frustrating.
Anyone else? So we're going to have to make a motion to pass this, correct?
Yes.
That is a public hearing.
Is there a timeline on this? Is there a time that we have to pass it by?
This, this law became effective in January, so it's already in place, so in essence, this is a cleanup item, just to, to clear our code of language that conflicts with that law, but the law is in effect, if somebody wants to open a large family daycare center in Los Alamos tomorrow, they can do that without any sort of permit approvals from the city.
Whether or not we pass this tonight?
Correct.
We're not really giving anybody any permission to do anything here that they can't already do. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I still don't want to vote for it.
Right, that's why nobody's saying. We're all playing chicken.
Michael, does this expose, if we don't do anything with this, and we don't clean this up, does this expose us to anything?
I think that, that exposure would most likely occur if we tried to enforce the existing code provisions to prevent someone from establishing.
So I would rather just not do anything, and we're not going to be able to do anything if it happens anyway, so why, I don't know, more of a principle of a thing, why, why do anything with it if it's going to happen whether we want it to or not, why put it in our code?
I mean, I, I think there's, perhaps this is getting more into a closed session type conversation, but there, there is a potential that someone would be discouraged from attempting to open one of these facilities based on the reading of our code, thinking that we do prohibit these uses, and then therefore asserting some sort of state claim against the city.
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we table this until we can go into closed session to understand the legal ramifications of having an ordinance on our books like this.
Before we take a vote on that motion, councilmember Gross did, did raise a point that this is a public hearing item, so I'd ask that we, we open it to the public to see if there are any members who wish to comment.
Does our speaker from earlier wish to speak?
No, I currently live next to this small family daycare that exists in Rossmore Highlands, so I lived through this, and, and was one of those that helped defeat the large family daycare several years ago, so I have been through this scenario, and it is not fair to the neighborhood for large family daycare, considering all the cars that are parked and all the logistics that go behind it, so I'll stay with my prior statement too. Thank you.
Wendy, anybody else who might want to speak on this?
We did not receive any other requests to speak. There's a line participating.
So Shelley has made a motion to hold this up until we can go into closed session, there was three seconds. We have a roll call vote on that, please.
Yes. Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Turco?
Yes.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Okay, go on to 10B. I can safely say, if you like 10A, you're going to love 10B. 10B, ordinance number 2020-04, State Mandated Update, Accessory Dwelling Unit, Regulation ZOA 1902. Michael, you stuck with this one too?
Yep, and I'm happy to go with it, unless you want to kick it off with some comments, Chet?
Just to say again that this is a mandate from the state, unlike the previous item, which largely had settled all of the questions that were in place, there are elements of this that while you don't have a lot of latitude, you have some latitude with regards to the regulations that you could put in place, largely around restricting the overall size within reason, and so, whereas the last item, that obviously is questionable as to whether or not there, there's value to adopting it, this one would allow you to be a bit more prescriptive than what the state has allowed for, so with that, I'll kick it to Michael.
Thank you, Chet, so the proposed ordinance before you this evening is another Los Alamos Municipal Code, zoning code amendment, it is intended to update our code to reflect the most recent state law enactments concerning the regulation of accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units, I know you've all seen, seen these issues come before you previously, but they're essentially an independent small residential use that is located on the same lot as another primary residence. They're independent in the sense that they have their own cooking facilities, restroom, shower facilities, et cetera, and exterior access points. The state has, for several years, promoted these accessory dwelling units as a, as a means of increasing the supply of housing and potentially affordable housing throughout the state. Prior to the most recent enactments, there were changes in 2016 that limited the local jurisdictions' abilities to review these uses, to impose parking requirements, and to undertake any sort of discretionary review of these units. The legislature has continued down that track with these most recent enactments, which further restrict the ability of local governments to impose any sort of discretionary review or local regulation and control of these units, in large part. Some of the more notable changes that were listed in the staff report that were enacted in 2019 is that cities are no longer able to require the owner of a primary residence to reside on the same property where an ADU is developed. This, in essence, means that someone could develop a single-family property, build an ADU, and the owner no longer is required to reside there, they could simply use it as an income generating property and rent out both the primary and the separate ADU unit. Other notable changes of the recent legislation are, the bill now clarified that these units can be built not only in connection with the single-family residence, but also with multi-family dwellings such as townhomes and condos, and the legislation has also streamlined the time within which the city is required to act on an application for an ADU. The city now has 60 days within submittal of a complete application to review a submittal and act on it, and the city's consideration in this case is limited to ministerial permitting, meaning the city in essence has to follow a checklist to make sure the proposed unit comports with objective standards, there's no longer comports with objective standards. There's no longer any element of discretionary review that the city can undertake to try to compel an applicant to undertake some sort of designer aesthetic changes. In essence, the city has to say, okay, is this unit the right size in terms of building permit requirements? And if so, the unit must be allowed. One area of discretion that Chet did mention that the city has some latitude is the ability to impose a maximum unit size cap. When this measure first went to the planning commission for review, we had included a 1,200 square feet maximum unit size cap for two-bedroom ADUs. And that was consistent with what our Muni code had in place prior to the most recent state action. When the planning commission undertook review and through our conversation, they decided and recommended that instead the city impose the most restrictive standard on size that it could, which is 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom unit. And so based on the planning commission's direction, we have in fact modified the ordinance to reflect that maximum unit size. Another component that was added following planning commission review was we have added language saying that an ADU must be architecturally consistent with the primary unit, meaning when an applicant comes in, they should be expected to make an effort to have these units somehow be consistent with and coherent in the context of the existing dwelling unit. Aside from that, I guess, as I stated before, parking requirements have been greatly diminished through this recent state action. Previously, if a developer were seeking to develop an existing garage and convert it to an ADU, the city would permit that and allow it, but they would be required to replace the onsite parking that had been provided for the single-family residents somewhere else on the property. As revised now, the law says that if you convert an existing accessory structure and through that conversion, you eliminate or reduce onsite required parking for a primary residence, there's no requirement that that parking be replaced onsite. So it's an additional step of greatly relaxing any sort of parking standards or requirements, not only for these ADU uses, but also for the primary units that they impact when they go in. I could probably continue all day on this in terms of measures that I think perhaps are overreaching or bind the city's hands in large respect, but I think perhaps at this point it may be most useful just to open it up to a conversation on the issue.
Again, we are a public hearing. Do we have any public, Wendy?
No, we did not receive any requests to speak for this item.
Okay, thank you. Back to my colleagues. Who'd like to start?
I have a couple of questions. Why not? You know, once again, state mandated, we can't do anything. We're going to be the most restrictive we can. Couple of things we might want to look at for future. One is, you know, not that we're a destination city by any means, but because the owners don't need to be living in these ADUs anymore or be part of the property at all, it might be a good idea to stick an ordinance on the books about short-term rentals. I know a lot of beach communities do, but make sure that not people come in and out all the time, that at least if they're going to be living there, they've got some sort of tie to the community for a certain amount of time. I don't know how long we can wait. Short-term rentals, was it 10 days, 30 days, 60 days? That I don't know. Another point is, and it's probably going to affect my neighborhood because I'm seeing these go up already. I've got one building on the corner of me, and it's turning into a massive structure. It's a house rebuild plus a couple of ADUs in Carrier Row because our lots are so big, these are going up much more frequently. And just, you know, I know that it got shot down this last time, but as these start going up to revisit the parking permit program again, if this becomes a big issue.
Mayor, if I may provide a quick response to that, I neglected to mention it before, but one of the things we are authorized to do is restrict these units with respect to short-term rentals. And so the ordinance before you does state that these units may not be rented for periods of less than 30 days, which the state law allows us to do, but is an option that the city may exercise. And so what I mean by that is, that's an example of where our enactment locally actually does provide some additional protection that would not otherwise exist if we don't take action on this ordinance.
Is the warranty due 30 days?
Yes.
Okay. I feel like I have a little bit of power.
Is there any provision regarding parking that can be enforced here?
The general rule with ADUs now is that an ADU must provide one parking spot when it's constructed. But I would say that the general rule is riddled with exceptions. If that unit is close to a transit stop or a bus stop, there's no parking requirement. If that unit was created from an existing, within an existing home or an accessory structure, then likewise, there's no parking requirements. So there are some requirements in instant or in limited situations where you can ask for additional onsite parking to be provided. But again, the exceptions defeat the rule in large part.
Okay. So in our city, with a bus that goes down Catala and a bus that goes down the boulevard, anything laying a half mile on either side of that, we're precluded from doing anything?
Yes.
Okay. So we're basically, we're not going to be able to use parking to help us here.
Yeah, it's if the ADU is located in one half-mile walking distance of public transit, including transit stations and bus stations. So I think you would be looking for an actual bus shell as opposed to just a line running through there, but nevertheless.
Okay. So there is one glimmer here, and that would be for our residents, if none of them are happy with what's being shoved down our way on these two items alone, elections have consequences. And we've got an election coming up in November, so it behoves them as voters to thoroughly vet any candidates that are running for state office, because it's those candidates that are doing this to us. Thank you, Dean. Anyone else? And I just want to say, if you, this disgusts me, this law, that if you look at the amount of time the cities, through the planning commission, and then through the city council, through the general plan that we put into discussing this subject, and now it's all just whitewashed away with one stroke of the pen from Sacramento. If you've saved all your life to get a single-family resident, which really is the gold standard in this country, and here it is taken away. There's no loosening of the regulations to build houses in general, which is really the thing that would improve housing. But instead, we get something like this. In the long run, this has a potential to turn every house into a triplex. And every four-story building can now become seven. As all of you know, as you go through Carrier Row, 80 to 90% of the people who have a garage use it for storage. They either park behind the garage door or on the street. So can you imagine if there's some more convergence of those garages, and then we add three units to a fourplex already out there? We're probably, three units is adding, let's say, six to eight cars per fourplex. And there are hundreds of them over there. What's this going to look like in two years?
Richard, you can go next door to me, where we have a grandfathered in with a house and two apartments that was done years and years and years ago. And there's three units there, and there are 12 cars.
Yeah.
I mean, I live right next door to it, and across the street and two houses down, they're building the same thing as ADUs. It's going to be the same exact thing, and they're on a corner. So now they're affecting two streets. The recourse we have is this becomes a problem to go back and visit the permit program where it's becoming a problem because we can localize that. But other than that, there's nothing really we can do about it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a quick comment. So obviously, a lot of, every jurisdiction is dealing with this issue, and especially the fallout from parking, and then also just the idea that neighborhoods are changing. One of the things that we've done in the past and we're starting to do now here is to actually look at different programs that we can put in place that are not directly related to ADUs, but simply more neighborhood preservation-type programs, such as registering rental properties, ensuring that code enforcement is up to speed on them, where they're located, those kind of things, in order to make sure that we're keeping an eye on properties when they transition one way or the other, and at least to provide a monicum of that these properties continue to be, or the owners continue to be good actors, given the fact that the owner no longer has to live there. It's a difficult issue, but I do believe that there are additional things that we can do that probably is a step further than we want to go, but what might give us some tools in hoping to kind of curtail these properties and their owners from becoming bad actors in the neighborhood.
Is it, do these units, because they can be up to a two-bedroom unit, do they qualify as part of our RENA count? In other words, do we get some benefit that way as well?
I don't know, Leslie, if you'd prefer to jump in on that, but I do believe that there is a benefit in terms of the RENA allocation and counts based on ADUs going in.
I would just say, Leslie, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's a percentage, Dean, or, Councilman, it's not going to get us all the way there. And again, it's going to be based on how many of these things are ultimately built. But at the end of the day, it's not going to solve our RENA calculation issues.
Now, I understand that, but it just, it helps. If there's any lining in all of this, it helps to add additional housing units.
True.
In that. The codes that are being changed to allow multi-use and up to 10 stories, will that affect any of this, or is that only on commercial residential-type zoning?
I think that may be a question for community development. Are we talking about updates for multi-use, tenancies, and mixed-use areas of the city?
Councilmember Gross, if you could repeat the question. I wasn't quite sure what you were asking.
My question was, because the state is coming down, relaxing height limits and allowing, especially on multi-use property, upwards of 10 stories, will this apply the same way? In other words, is there, I know I've read the ordinance, and there is a restriction, I believe, on 16 feet. But as we progress down this road, is there a chance that these are going to become even taller?
So if it can, Councilman, I note, I think the restriction with regards to building that height in those locations is going to be the standard. I don't think that that is going to be relaxed. There is some question as to what exactly this means going down the road with regards to high rises and all those kind of things. And I think that the effects of that have yet to be seen.
Okay. Thank you. So, Chet, on the last issue, we kind of punted by bringing it back. Is there anything that's worth discussing in closed session here?
So I would say to the council that while the other issue, there's some question, I think, to Councilmember Hasselbrink's point of a, you know, what a principled stand might be. In this instance, this is law. And also, from the standpoint of, until we have a, we adopt our ordinance, people can come in and start building the larger units that are currently allowed under the state law. So by adopting this ordinance, you actually are, again, putting more controls in place. It allows us to stem the tide a little bit with regards to buildings that are being built that don't have the same architectural difference, or are not the same architecturally as the rest of the community. So I would suggest passing this ordinance tonight, and then if there are other items that you would like to discuss with regards to it, we're happy to agendize it for closed session if we find a way to go further. But Michael and I have spent a significant amount of time talking about this item, both with the planning commission and with each other. And I think that we've reached the point of what is going to be allowable, because at the end of the day, this ordinance, again, has to go back up to the state and be approved there. So I don't think that there's going to be a lot of ground for us to be able to add additional regulations into this space. Michael, I don't know if you want to follow up on that as well?
No, I absolutely agree with that. I think we've done the best we can with severe limitations to try to carve out whatever controls or requirements that we can that could potentially help the city or help the impact of these developments in the city. And until we have an ordinance in place, the default will simply be state law, which is more permissive than what we've presented to you this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, with that, I'd like to make a motion to pass this as is.
I'll second. Okay, Dean will second. Roll call vote.
Mayor, would you like me to read the title in for the record before the vote's taken?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Before the council, for consideration, is ordinance number 2020-04 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending and Restating Section 17.08.020 and 17.28.020 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Concerning the Regulation of Accessory Dwelling Units."
Thank you. Wendy, you're up, I guess.
A motion by Councilmember Hasselbrink, seconded by Councilmember Gross for staff recommendation. Roll call. Mayor Murphy?
Very reluctant, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chirco?
Yes.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Okay. Before we go on, I'd like to thank the planning commission for all the work they did on this issue, and especially Commissioner Victor Self-Holcanic for all his follow-up. Moving on, 10C, master fee schedule update. Chet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you are aware, cost recovery is a large issue for any jurisdiction, but especially in a small jurisdiction. Whenever you have these services, which are voluntary or requested, there's a nexus that allows us to ensure that we're capturing our full cost recovery. The simple ace, and I'll put it over to Craig to answer any questions, essentially is that every time where we do not have true cost recovery, residents are supplementing the cost of a service to a developer or to an individual who chooses to take advantage of that service. As such, it's important to maintain that you are, that you're keeping that balance so that costs is not being, not choosing to use the service. With that, I'll kick it to Craig for presentation or any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chet. For the record, good evening, Mayor and council. For the record, Craig Kohler, Interim Finance Director. Just to wave a little bit of background information, in 2015, the city engaged a consulting firm, NBS, to conduct an independent user fee charges study. In 2017, the study was completed. And on July 31, 2017, the council adopted Resolution 2017-13, which approved the master fee schedule pursuant to the recommendations of NBS. With that recommendation, they also recommended that the user fees keep pace with the cost of inflation by way of of inflation by way of utilizing a cost CPI adjustment. So at this time, city staff has conducted an annual review of the master fee schedule and recommends an increase of 1.9% to the applicable fees and charges to reflect the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the Los Angeles area inclusive of Orange County for the period of March 2019 through March 2020. The estimated increase in revenue resulting from this CPI adjustment is approximately $15,000. Note here that the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 to 21 does not include or assume any CPI adjustment to the city's fee schedules at this point. We'll open up to any questions that the council has.
Any comments?
I have one.
For the record, this is a public hearing and we did not receive any resident comments requests for speaking.
Thank you. Does someone have something to say? Yeah, I do. I don't see where it's a public hearing. It's a discussion item, I think.
No, it's a public hearing. It's listed as 10C under public hearings.
Okay. All right. My question is on the very last, almost the last page of the fees. I've gone through each of the pages. Most of it seems to be recovery cost on Parks and Recreation, the 5-5 series. Aquatics, we're not doing anything on. There's no changes apparently. Under Community Services, we're recommending, this is for seniors program, facility rental of the community center, the gym or the shelter, and Public Works Building Maintenance, we're requesting only a 30% fee, which means we're giving away 70%, and I don't think that's Day camp is at 85%. We're subsidizing 15%. On sports, you're showing 64%. That's the 36% giveaway. On special classes, and I believe this is the majority of the classes we have, you're showing a recovery of 35%, but a giveaway of 65%. Preschool is at 86. Special events are at 65%. What is the reasoning behind the low recovery on a lot of these classes or these programs? Why aren't they 100%?
And allow me, I'll kick it to both Ron and Emeline to fill in the gaps, but just from a historical standpoint, in general, recreation department programs that are kind of fall into a category of maybe social services or services that are provided directly to residents, I have seen that historically, there are, this area is typically not 100% cost recovery. But again, I'll kick it to Ron and Emeline to, maybe they can provide some background.
Let me start first and then Emeline will follow, but depending on the program that you are mentioning, Councilman Gross, like Chet said, some of it is a community service type thing where we do not recover costs such as senior services, our senior service program, and our, like, another example is our Summer Park program. Other programs, such as our adult sports, our day camp, try to be competitive with the going market rate, so we can still allow people to come in and get quality programming. But if we charge too high, such as recovering at 100% cost, then we are going to price ourselves out of that market, right? And then a third example that I know, that I heard from you is contract classes or special classes. That is because the instructor does the majority of the work. That's why we pay out that 65%. So the 35% that we take in is pretty much like a rental fee for them to utilize our buildings. And then they do all the marketing, they keep the class, they come up with the lesson plan and all that. So that's just a really quick overview, and I know Emeline can dive a little bit deeper into that.
Good evening. Yeah, we try to recover when we are referring to direct costs in terms of supplies and staffing for programs. However, when you take into account overhead costs such as, you know, administration, keeping the building, keeping the lights on, that type of thing, that's when you see that the cost recovery is not present because it incorporates the overhead costs. But we do try to retain all of the, or recover all of the direct costs.
You know, for my fellow colleagues, I've been to some of the, all of these programs are definitely worthwhile. I'm definitely in favor of us doing them, providing them for the community. But on the senior programs, as an example, I've been to a few of their events and functions, and there's a large number of people that aren't Los Alamos. They're coming from Long Beach, they're coming from other cities because they like the program we do. I'm just concerned with the financial situation that we're going into irrespective of the COVID-19 issues. I'm worried that policy-wise, we're allowing the taxpayer to subsidize a lot of these type programs, and I'm not sure if that's really the case. As an example, five, six years ago, maybe even a little bit longer than that ago, we didn't have the Los Alamos Education Foundation offering the same kinds of classes through the school district. Those, for lack of anything, are being paid for by the taxpayers who donate support life. We've got a youth center that does a summer camp, does the same kind of thing. I don't know that they're subsidizing in the same way. What Ron is saying, I believe, is that they, to compete with them, we have to get down into the same area. I'm not really sure whether we need to be in that area if there's two other entities within the community that are providing the services. I recognize it's cost-effective, but the day camp is done, I believe, over in Rossmore. And the youth centers' day camps are done in Rossmore as well. I think we need to take a harder look, or the council needs to take a harder look at our cost recovery when we're looking in, and I understand it's building cost, it's lights, the youth center uses that building, and I don't know if they're paying their fair share from the standpoint of overhead and costs. We're spending a lot of money with repairs to restrooms, repairs to flooring, repairs to roll-up doors, repairs to the roof that are not really, I don't think, reflected in these costs. I just wonder why we're, on community services, we're eating 70%. On classes, we're eating 65%. It would seem, for a start, we ought to be at least at a 50-50 role on some of those. Where, you know, the day camp, it's an 85% and we're only eating 15. That makes sense. The preschool, a 14% increase, I mean, a 14% loss. And the special events, if we're going to do them, we ought to be doing them as close to cost neutral as we possibly can. I don't think we can continue to go down the road policy-wise, offering these kinds of programs. If the community wants them, then I think the community needs to understand they have to pay the right fare going in. We can't, I don't think, continue to afford to write off 70%, 65%, and so on. I don't know how my other colleagues feel.
I feel that there's a lot of competition out there, and I feel that the youth center that offers their day camp in Rush Park, nobody from the Highlands would go, they're going to go for the cheapest alternative for day camp. And Rush Park is not an inconvenience for anybody in Los Alamos to go to to spend summer camp. I think we don't have the loyalty. Nobody does when you're offering like programs, and I think if we raise our prices too high, we're going to lose the customer base and we'll never get it back. And I think we need those programs, and as long as we're not losing money on them, I think it's something we need to offer because the competition is intense out there between private industry, offering classes, life, the youth center, everything else. And I think we just, we need to be as competitive and creative as possible.
Mark or Tanya?
I would say that, I agree with Dean, but it's, to me, it's more of a, I think the fees right now are fair, and the system we have of using inflation to try to keep up so we don't get into the same spot we got in three years ago, where we hadn't looked at it in a number of years, this at least will be a mechanism to keep it going. But when we are doing our budget, I think we do need to take a look at this area.
Mayor, and I also think as we move forward, as we start reopening things, things are going to look different, and I think that's going to guide us in what classes we offer, how we offer them, how many people can be there, and I think that's going to set more policy than just us raising prices right now for the set of raising prices. So I'd rather just wait to see how we look when we reopen and revisit this.
Okay. Would you care to move the fee schedule?
Sure, I'll move that one.
I will second it. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Chirco?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
On the basis of my discussion, I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
The pass is four to one. Move on to discussion item, Annual Fourth of July Spectacular.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I kick it over to Ron to go through the details, I just wanted to say that when I first joined the city, I had the opportunity to go out to the Race on the Base. It was my first full-fledged Los Alamos event. Michael ran faster than me in the 5K, which was embarrassing for me, but it was a great showing of what this community is about in terms of the events, and then also just the events that your recreation department puts on. The item before you is largely to talk about one of those events, given the current pandemic and where exactly we're at. This is one that I've struggled with personally. There is part of me that wants to see this event go forward, and obviously in a reduced capacity, but I understand the challenges of it. So with that, I'll kick it over to Ron.
Thank you. Good evening, again, Mayor, City Council, but a little background on the Fourth of July, so I think a lot of you are aware that our Annual Fourth of July draws approximately anywhere between 12,000 to 15,000 to the Joint Forces Training Base, and we have a pretty massive footprint over there. We utilize the big tarmac for parking and what we call the East Ramp, which is a very large square footage for our event area. Our event incorporates, we bring in a large stage with accompanying sound, we have live entertainment, we have food trucks, we have static displays, we have vendors, we have games or activities for, I wouldn't call it games, but activities for children and families to do, and people come out, gates open at 4:00, and they just hang out for the day to celebrate the Fourth of July, like I said, listen to music, and then at 9:00 PM, one of the longest and greatest, best, I won't say greatest, but best fireworks show is shot off, shut up, shot into the sky. So what, the reason why I say our fireworks show is very good is the fact that it's 22 minutes long and that we fire ground fireworks, but we fire shells up to 10 inches high, 10-inch shells, so that's about 1,000 feet in the air. And because of the massive airbase, airfield, we can shoot those. Most cities only are shooting four- to five-inch shells into the sky, and we double that. And because of that, again, that's my opinion, I think we do a very awesome fireworks show with accompanying music. Again, with COVID-19 and this pandemic, it has changed the landscape of all our events, quite frankly. We had to cancel a lot of our recreation events, starting in the spring and March, and so now we're going forward for the Fourth of July, and we can, again, it's a discussion with the city council, but one scenario that we're going to put there is that we just shoot the fireworks show. I've talked to the base last week and had a discussion with them, saying that it's only going to be fireworks personnel and a couple city staff, and that we're going to go up there and we're going to fire the fireworks show. We're going to eliminate the ground fireworks, and then we're just going to, and replace them with four- to five-inch shells so we can get them higher, so homes that surround the community can view it at the safety of their own residents. Along that route, if we do decide that, we're going to go into a massive, you know, advertising or marketing to talk about the requirements specifically for this COVID-19, about the gatherings and the social distancing and all of that. So again, that is a recommendation, one of the recommendations that we can do, as again, I know that there's going to be some, you know, challenges, again, with people. One of the things that I do want to mention, it's in the report, that most of the city have canceled their shows. The only city that I am aware of that is going to proceed with their show today, they could change their mind, is San Juan Cafestrono, but most of the cities have canceled their shows or it's on the agenda for discussion. But again, talking to the base, they are currently allowing us to go on and shoot fireworks, and people around the city can view it from the safety of their home. The second option, of course, is just to direct staff to not pursue an agreement with the fireworks company and just cancel the event altogether. But again, one of the things that is, we've got to talk about, and I've inquired that with the base, is the fiscal impact of it. So the proceeds that we incur from Race on the Base has to be utilized for the Fourth of July. If not, then we have to pass that entire proceeds on to the California Department, California Military Department, State of California. And I've inquired to them that because of COVID-19, can we delay the proceeds of the 2020 race to the 2021 Fourth of July if that occurs? They have not responded. They are running that up through their legal, up to Sacramento, and then they said they'll let me know as soon as possible. But again, that's kind of a little bump in the road for that. But right now, the fireworks show is approximately $32,000, and the race proceeds around 14, Republic Services sponsorship is $15,000, and then the rest of the gap, we're going to fill in with most likely other sponsorships such as Memorial Care of Long Beach. But that ends my report, and I will be happy to take any questions or if anyone else like Emeline or Chet wants to add.
I'd just add one additional thought. So I, as recently as last week, was having conversations with the city manager in Seal Beach. They have budgeted money to contribute to this event as well, and I received a commitment from their city manager that in the event that we were to move forward, that they would be willing to contribute financially to the, to the cost of the event as well.
So what, so what would the cost be? I know it's $32,000 for the fireworks, but we're talking about Republic is contributing 15, Seal Beach may contribute, and we've got proceeds from Race on the Base. What are we going to be out of pocket if we go forward?
You will not be out of pocket for materials and all those things. The only cost is obviously the cost of staff, which is already figured into the overall budget.
That's if you have the fireworks show from afar, right? That's assuming that no one goes on the base to see fireworks?
That is correct. Right now, even though the base did not say that we weren't allowed to have participants come onto the base to view it, my discussion with them is tentatively, they don't want people to come onto the base. So they, they said that the scenario that we presented in the staff report, where it's only the fireworks contractor and maybe a few staff members for cleanup, because, you know, we have to clean up the shells, they're allowed that, but I don't think they're going to allow us to have an actual public come onto the base with all this COVID-19 stuff that we're dealing with.
Even if they don't leave their car, like if they pull in, drive-ins now, they still won't allow it?
That is correct. That is actually the first That is correct. That is actually the first scenario that we presented to them was a drive-up style and they, they kind of had some trepidations about that.
We would also recommend to close, um, some of the parks, Little Cottonwood Park, Orville Lewis, where a lot of the mass gatherings would typically occur to watch the fireworks. And also if Seal Beach, um, we would talk to them about Arbor Park as well.
Even, and that's, that's the case, I mean, even, even if people social distance, we'd still close the parks just because we're assuming it wouldn't be sufficient? Social distancing or too big of a crowd or why, why is that?
You couldn't really regulate, um, that. We usually also have a restroom there, um, for Parks Program and we, we are not going to have that this year.
Yeah.
Where do you see the fireworks?
Make friends with somebody who does.
Hey Shelley, will you be my friend?
You can be my friend. I mean, honestly, guys, you know, Seal Beach is willing to work with us. There's no out of pocket, you know, this is, this would be a huge shot in the arm for our local residents to say something's going to be normal. It might not be the same, but my goodness, at least we get to do something. Cause I think if we don't do it, we're going to have all up and down our streets in our city because they're going to celebrate regardless. And I just think psychologically, it's not going to cost us anything. It's a good partnership with Seal Beach, which we could use and why not? Um, so some of our residents can see it, you know, we're in the process of kind of reopening by Fourth of July. It's probably going to be a little bit more open and I just think this is a nice summer tradition. I just think psychologically we need.
But they'd be televised too?
We, I mean, we could do it on Facebook Live. We could definitely do that.
I mean, cause my thought is what if there's restaurants that are open by then and they can stream it like they do fights and they stream a fireworks show and then it gets them a little business if we have evolved to that place. And then people that might not be able to see it as well can head over to a local place and check out the show.
Great suggestion.
We'll look into that. Yes.
I was, uh, I was ready to be the trench. I wrote down, you know, 22 minutes for $32,000, uh, assuming we would be paying a big chunk of that, but, but if we're not, I think that's, I agree with, uh, Shelley. If Seal Beach is willing to contribute, if, uh, Republic is paying a big chunk and if we've got proceeds from Race on the Base that we might not otherwise be able to use, um, I think we, I, I'd be in favor of moving forward. Um, I, I'd want the residents to know, I don't know if we put it in the paper or, or maybe some posts on social media. I would definitely want the residents to know that, um, we're not spending our tax money on this because I've asked a few people about this and, um, a lot of them do say, look, it, it would be a sense of normalcy if we had this. It would be great. You know, our kids could watch it. Our kids are out of school. They're not seeing their friends or depressed. I mean, my kids are, you know, finally broke down recently because, you know, life is so different now. Um, but some people did also say, look, you guys, they, they know some of our part-time employees aren't getting as many hours and, you know, cities are cutting staff and, and serious things are happening. And so we don't want to give them the impression that we're spending tens of thousands of dollars on a really short show, uh, when, when there's all this stuff going on right now. So I just think if we can get the message out right, it, it'll look like, you know, the city staff, as they have done, uh, have done a great job getting, uh, contributions and getting others to pay for this and, and we get a great show. It's a shame we can't go on the base because that is, it, it is wonderful there. But, um, I think this would be great if we could get some fireworks.
And messaging is key, but I agree. I think we can get the word out and just psychologically, I think it's, it would be wonderful.
Ron, could you move over the numbers one more time real quick? How much is Seal Beach in for?
Oh, uh, sorry, Ron. So in my preliminary conversation with the, uh, city manager there was between, uh, five and eight thousand. So if, if that's the case, that more than covers, uh, the expense. Uh, what we would, and then to, to Mark and Shelley's point, if it is the desire of the council to move forward, we would probably do a heavy marketing campaign. Uh, we might talk about actually doing a little mailer, those kinds of things, just to let everybody know. And obviously we would message those along the way of this is at no cost to the taxpayer. This is being funded through, you know, donations and, uh, revenue generated from other events and those kinds of things. So of course I, I think that, like you said, uh, Councilmember House America, it's definitely an important part of the messaging.
And I think it's not only no cost to the taxpayer, but no cost to the city. I think that's the message we really need. So if we start talking about budget cuts and, you know, stuff on the ballot to, to make us whole, that, you know, it's not the taxpayers' cost, it's why is the city spending the money when they're claiming they're poor type thing? So that messaging is key, but I think we can do it. I mean, I really do and let the neighborhoods have some fun.
And we get props to our sponsors at the same time, you know, and encourage, uh, more sponsorships in the future with, uh, some additional advertising for them.
How, how much, how much is the Race on the Base kicking in?
It's approximately 14,000.
And we don't know if, if we can delay that. If, if we can't delay it, we lose it.
Correct.
The 15,000 from Republic is, can we move that somewhere else?
It's their, um, community, um, you know, part of their community, um, sponsorship.
Right.
Honestly, I, I'll be honest with you, I have to read their 122-page contract to see if we can move it somewhere else. Cause, uh, the last several, several years, that 15,000 has always gone to the Fourth of July. And then if we are allowed to move it somewhere else, then we'd have to have that conversation with Republic Services because they like the fact that our, our fireworks show brings in not only, you know, residents of Los Alamos, but all, you know, people from Seal Beach and Rossmore. And so they like to get their messaging across to all those, um, constituents of, of, of their services.
Okay, thank you. I've got some questions. Is now a good time? Yeah, go ahead, Dean. Okay, um, Ron said that he'd talked to all the cities and everybody's canceled. Has Cypress canceled their show?
That is correct. They have.
So in reality, Cypress pulled away from ours last year to do their own at the college. They've canceled theirs. They could potentially be approached to provide some funds towards this one as well. Um, Rossmore used to pay 6,000 toward it. Is Rossmore paying anything?
At this time, they have not confirmed any, uh, monetary donation to the event.
Have we approached them?
I just had a slight conversation with their general manager and, uh, you know, he didn't say yes or no. He didn't, he didn't really tell any, tell me anything. He just said he's going to have a conversation with his board.
Okay. City of LA, have they canceled their show at the Coliseum?
Yes.
I, yeah, that's a, I don't.
Well, they did because of the gathering and they can't, they can't bring people.
How about the Rose Bowl? Have they canceled theirs as well?
I would assume yes. I don't, I don't have that answer for you. I would assume yes.
Well, I'm, you know, you guys said that you've talked to all the cities. Those are the two other big shows. Uh, I had a discussion earlier with the city manager and one of the problems that shooting off the fireworks on the base and all being aerial, that we're going to encounter, which will be some additional expenses, uh, are people in the neighborhoods, uh, parking beyond what we normally have because there's no parking on the base. Um, people going to, um, the park down and in the Highlands at Orville Lewis to watch, people going over to, um, Cottonwood, or not Cottonwood, the, the golf course down there, uh, the golf course at the, at the Navy Golf Course. Um, we also have them going to, um, property on, at Cottonwood Church, we have them going to property all along Cotella, any place that they can find. And in some of that industrial area, there are spaces there where they can pull in them and load parking lots right up to the fence and be able to watch them as well. I know there was a discussion of whether or not we had liability for people that were going on to private property. And I think I, I'm in favor of, of what the discussion is. I just want to be fully transparent from the standpoint of where some costs should be. Um, it, it, this is the first time that I heard comment that our negotiations with JFTB are such that if they do not, uh, if we do not use the money, the excess money, uh, on the Fourth of July show, uh, that it has to go up to the state military department. Uh, to me, that, that's just wrong. Um, because JFTB also kicked in, if I'm not mistaken, um, under Colonel Vaughn. And I believe the same under, uh, Colonel Dusich, they kicked in five grand. Um, we're going to have an influx of people, even with Cypress, they were doing theirs on the Third of July. That was their plan again this year. That still means that the people of Cypress can double bang because we don't control who goes on the base for the shows. We won't be able to control traffic-wise on who parks illegally, who fills up neighborhoods, uh, particularly in Carrier Row, um, and even in the apartment areas along Park Court, uh, the baseball field. We're going to have an influx of people that normally would go on to the base that aren't going on to the base, that are going to want to see the fireworks. We have to take that into some type of, of, uh, accounting because the increased calls from residents trying to do the right thing by shooting them off, upsetting the residents further because we're allowing an incursion into their residential area.
Can we charge for parking? What if we set up, Michael, get me if you need to, but what if we had designated places? Uh, Councilmember, you were talking about like the church over there, that's a lot of parking. The industrial spaces or the commercial spaces, that's a lot of parking. What if we set up a, a pay-for parking if you park in one of those spots? Could we do something like that?
Usually private property, they do that up in LA around the Coliseum. They do it up in Pasadena and around the Rose Bowl. People sell their front yards for, uh, 15, 20 bucks a space to park their cars on their front yard. Um, I don't think legally, and, and Michael could address that part, I don't think legally the city can do any of it, but I think we somehow need to notify all of these property owners, um, of the fact that we're going to, to go down this road, this path. And, uh, and it, and it has the potential of, of creating some additional issues on their property. They may want to hire private security and chain off their driveways and chain off that access. Um, I don't know. Uh, no.
Well, my thought was if we afford parking, then they can utilize the park, whether we charge them for it or not. But if we say, okay, you can park at the, the, um, the baseball field there or you can park, stay in your car at Cottonwood, but you can park at Cottonwood or you can park down the Long Street of Park Court on the right heading towards the base, which I don't know if normally you can park there, I don't think you can, but designate some parking spots so that it would kind of cut down a little bit on the neighborhood infringement, not completely, but just if we could direct the traffic, that might.
You, you're going to have Cypress that's going to be impacted over by the racetrack and along their part of Cotella, um, technically Cottonwood is in Cypress. You're going to have Seal Beach that's going to be, uh, impacted because they normally have them on the beach anyhow, but you're going to have impacts in the Target Center. You're going to have impacts over at the Rossmore Center, uh, because if it's an aerial show, that works out even better for people to be able to, to view it from a distance. I like your idea of live streaming it and somehow getting it on the screens and restaurants or, or those facilities that can accommodate, uh, hoping that we've got them back open by that time.
And to get, to get on the parking for like Carrier Row, because I'm three houses down from the base, there's not going to be that much available parking because residents park there. A lot of them have barbecues and everything just because of the relationship to the base. As far as LAYB, um, that's a locked gate. It's currently locked, um, to keep people off of that. And to make that available for parking, because it's base property, I don't even think they would be willing to broach that with the base. You know, we lease that from them, so it's kind of, we'd rather just leave it, you know, because then they have to talk about the social distancing and how they're going to park and the bathrooms and, and everything else. So it's, um.
I didn't realize it was part of the base.
Yeah, it's part of the base. We have a, a dollar lease with them, but it is part of the base. Um, as far as, you know, Cottonwood and Target Center and everything, it's just basically letting them know that there's going to be a fireworks show, um, you know, and, and regulate it as normal. We're not going to be able to get any money from Rossmore or Cypress because from their cities, they're really not going to be able to see anything. Rossmore, it's going to be very hard on Martha Anne to be able to see anything. So I don't see their compelling reason of donating to the cause if there's no viewing area from Rossmore. Um, like I say, I think it's important for our local residents to be able to do this and if it's cost neutral, um, I love the idea. And my neighborhood would be impacted. And I can guarantee if you talk to most people in Carrier Row, they're willing. We do it every year with Race on the Base on the Fourth of July already. And for, for the proximity and to be able to view them, they're willing to deal with the hassle. And Dean, the Coliseum and Rose Bowl have canceled theirs. I just looked online while you were talking.
Thank you. That, that makes it harder because then they're going to come to us.
From Pasadena?
Pasadena draws from everywhere. But, you know, if, if this is the only place that's doing live fireworks, uh, boy.
Remember, a lot of cities have Safe and Sane that they can do in their front yards.
Right. And I think you're going to see some of that too. You know, that was the original agreement that if they would eliminate allowing Safe and Sane in the city, we would put on the show. Um, that was the trade-out. And if they, if they can't get on the base to do it, or we're not going to do them by shooting them up at the base, I wouldn't be surprised because fireworks are sold in Garden Grove, Westminster, Hawaiian Gardens, Cerritos. Um, people go and buy them there, but I think we're going to have block parties throughout the community the same way, just because people want to get together. More so than we've had in the past, sadly. That means a bigger issue from the standpoint of police.
I still think if we can stream it to all of our little restaurants that are going to need a vitamin, everything shot by the time it's a roll around, it could be a win for everybody, as long as they have a television.
Well, most of them do. But yeah, that's, that's definitely a great bonus.
Well, so I'll just for, to kind of hopefully wrap this up, because I've been long-winded about it as well. You know, I'll, I'll move the item that we proceed with, uh, the fireworks, you know, the 26, 26,000? 32,000, um, with the currently committed money that we have with messaging, staff already knows what to do with that and welcome back Los Al. We're, we're hopefully opening and let's be patriotic, whether we're physically on the base or not, but at least we're offering something.
Is the chief on the call?
Yep.
Chief, could you address, before we vote, could you address, uh, the parking in your mind? Where would people park?
Well, if we normally get 11, 12 to 15,000 people that show up to this event, um, when they're on the. um, when they're on the base, um, and that's that's with all of the other events going on. And now that all the events are going to be canceled and we advertise that this event is going to be going on, I have a feeling we're going to have at least that many people in the neighborhoods parking um, somewhere. And that's they'll park wherever they can park a car and in the shopping centers are parked. Um, and I don't know where we're going to be at in terms of, you know, um, opening up for, um, like we were talking about the restaurants, but I'm not even sure with all the social distancing stuff that's still, if that's going to be in a situation that's in place at that time that we're going to, um, they're not going to have capacity or near capacity as a result of that. So I think that, I mean, I think this is a great, uh, I think the um, Councilmember Hasselbrink was saying it's great, I think, for the morale of our citizens and all that. But I think that, um, yeah, I don't know, I I just think that there's going to be a large, a large draw that's going to wind up being probably in all the surrounding neighborhoods that are closest to the event. So all of those neighborhoods are going to be impacted as well as the ones that are, I guess that's Garden Grove or maybe Cypress. That's, you know, by the um, on the other side of the golf course and uh, in that area too, where they can see where some of those people actually do watch it from their homes. Probably have people in their neighborhoods watching it, you know, from their outside of their cars in the street, wherever they're going to go.
Thank you. Michelle, you made a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Was there a second?
Me.
Tanya, okay. A roll call vote, please.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Sherfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Yes.
It passes four to one.
Richard, you can still come to my house.
I'm not going to be in the city that day because I think we're creating a mess that we're going to regret for years, but we'll see what happens. We get five thousand new people and where are we going to put them? If all the other cars are parked where they normally are having parties on the streets, I I think we're making a huge mistake, but.
Well, the other option is we open up two firework stands and we offer Safe and Sane for this year for residents to do their own little fireworks in the street.
Yeah, I think we're a little late for that, though.
Mayor, if I may, uh, just real quick, the the action taken tonight was to make a recommendation to staff that was indicative of the majority of the city council's desire to move forward with the firework display. So the actual agreement with the firework vendor will in fact come back to the council for consideration and formal approval. Um, so you all have, you will all have a second opportunity to discuss uh, your respective positions on this when that agreement comes back.
So it's not fi- it's not finalized until June?
Excuse me?
So i- is that, is it the case that it would not be finalized until June?
Chet, Chet may be able to speak more directly to proposed schedules for that. But yes, as as of now, we do not have a final approved agreement with the vendor. We've we've discussed that. It's something I'm confident we will be able to bring forward. It just was not agendized tonight for approval. It was positioned as an opportunity to discuss whether or not you wanted staff to continue down that path.
Again, so and to that, Michael, thank you for bringing that up. So two, two things. First being that, um, obviously we will work, uh, given the fact that it's the desire of the majority of the council to move forward with this item. We will bring it back relatively quickly. Uh, I know I don't want to force any additional meetings on you, um, but that being said, um, there will be some time of the essence on this, uh, in order to make sure that we get an agreement in place in order to allow for the planning. Uh, so I'll be working with Ron on that. And then number two, uh, given the fact that there is interest in moving forward, I think it's incumbent upon myself, the chief and city staff to start looking at what are the things that we can do to mitigate the potential issues that might arise out of this. And I'm not saying that we'll be able to mitigate all of them, but I'm saying that reaching out to Cottonwood, looking at what exactly we can do with regards to parking, what our enforcement looks like on the day of the event, all those things we need to bring back to you now that we know that there is an interest and so that you have a the opportunity to have all that information when you make your decision.
Hey, Chet, and since it sounds like the firework vendor, um, is going to have a plethora of extra fireworks, um, can you strike a deal with them since we seem to be the only game in town?
Yeah, it's a.
They're getting more of the big shells?
I think that is a fair conversation to be having.
Why not?
Good idea.
Can I clarify, um, you wanted to see if the vendor has additional fireworks to um, shoot off that day? Is that, is that what you want me to look into?
Well, for this, for the same price, I mean, obviously supply and demand, and their demand is low. And I'm sure they have a supply of thousands of fireworks. You know, they they don't order these in April, so I'm sure, you know, their warehouses are full of fireworks that they'd love to get rid of. So maybe they'll strike us a deal.
Play, play hardball, tell them, you know, tell them there's a lot of uh, a lot of availability out there with other vendors and we want an hour of fireworks instead of twenty two minutes.
Yeah, just the bigger shells, you know, instead of the three to four inch, obviously we can't do those, but the ten inch ones, let's see. I mean, it doesn't have to ask, what they can do is say no, that they don't have expiration dates and they'll be back in twenty twenty one, but why not ask?
I will send our master negotiating team in to uh.
An hour, Ron, an hour.
I saw we're we're clear on eleven eleven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Eleven B preliminary general fund budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one.
Thank you, sir. And largely Craig will be doing the heavy lifting on this one, but uh, this is the preliminary general fund budget. The goal for tonight is obviously to get a real good in-depth understanding of what exactly has happened to the city with regards to uh, sales tax, T O T, uh, our other revenues and of course, our expenses for the year going forward. Uh, we knew coming into this year that there was going to be a projected deficit. Uh, we did a lot of work to mitigate that uh, this current year. Um, obviously there's been some additional impacts, given the fact that COVID nineteen has decimated a lot of our local economy. Um, while we are looking forward to getting our businesses back open, we realize that there is going to be an impact at least through the fall with how exactly um, it's going to impact our revenues. Um, so again, tonight is to get an idea of what exactly those um, those impacts look like. And then also to lay out a very general thirty thousand foot view strategy with regards to what uh, staff and the standing budget committee have looked at in order to um, be able to uh, close that gap. And then also to then um, proceed to a discussion about what exactly the details are um, with regards to things that'll be related to uh, our labor unions, which again, we'll discuss during closed session. So with that, Craig?
Thank you, Chet. Madam City Clerk, I'm not able to share my screen for some reason.
Hold on, let me double check.
Is it? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay, good evening again, Mayor and Council. For the record, Craig Kohler, interim finance director. Um, I think the PowerPoint slide was sent to you previously or earlier today, so you should have it as well. Um, so the overview tonight, uh, we're reviewing and discussing the preliminary budget for the general fund uh, fiscal year twenty twenty one. Uh, as Chet had mentioned, city managers mentioned, the staff has been meeting with the budget standing committee uh, on a regular basis. Uh, this will be present presenting this information for the full council uh, for the first time tonight. So as you know, the fiscal sustainability planning projected significant deficit beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty one. Um, the however, the updated modeling projects general fund deficit approximately one point three million for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And this is uh, due to several major things. Uh, first thing is significant decrease in revenues as a result of the pandemic. Uh, there's also been some federal and state regulatory changes that has affected this as well. Uh, there's been some measures to offset some of the losses through some budgetary actions that have already taken place. Moving on to slide four. Uh, here's a snapshot of the fiscal year twenty twenty one general fund preliminary budget. You can see we start with the beginning fund balance of eight point eight million, uh, adding in projected revenues and transfers of approximately thirteen point six million, uh, less operating expenditures and transfers out of approximately fourteen point nine million, uh, ending fund balance of seven, approximately seven point five million or a negative change in fund balance or a deficit of one million, three hundred forty seven thousand, seventy three dollars. On slide five, this is a snapshot of the preliminary general fund budget revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Uh, by categories, you can see the overall decrease from the amended budget from nineteen twenty to the preliminary budget for twenty twenty one projects a approximately seven hundred ninety thousand dollar decrease. The major uh, decreases here are, you can see it's sales and use taxes, a decrease of approximately seven hundred twenty five thousand. Uh, there's small decreases or increases in some other categories. I can go into the detail and explanation in those uh, in the next further slides. On slide six, um, it's is an overview, decrease in revenues again, approximately seven hundred ninety thousand dollars uh, less. It's approximately five percent decrease from the previous amended budget. Largest reductions are obviously in sales and use taxes, approximately seven hundred twenty five thousand. This is assuming H D L's worst case scenario. They presented this information, I believe it was uh, April sixteenth in our last Zoom or meeting or call with them. Uh, general categories, autos and transportation, approximately down approximately twelve percent. Businesses down approximately nine percent, restaurants and hotels decrease approximately ten percent. Uh, some other revenue changes, uh, T O T will see approximately sixty thousand dollar increase. Uh, assuming this is for the third hotel coming online, uh, projecting sometime late in twenty twenty. However, reduced levels of activity for all three hotels at least through the end of twenty twenty and probably into twenty twenty one. Uh, license permits will be see an increase, a projection of about seventy two thousand dollar increase. Uh, this assumes increased activity once health mandates have been lifted. Uh, property taxes, small decrease of about forty six thousand. Uh, this is not really related to COVID nineteen, however, it's more industry driven by the uh, overall supply and the sales activities that uh, seeing trending now currently in the last fourth quarter. And charged for services approximately uh, forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars less. And this is projection due to reduction in program activity mainly from rec classes. Looking at slide seven, this is a overview of the expenditures by category requirements for fiscal year twenty twenty one. The overall increase from the amended budgets, five hundred fifty seven thousand. Um, biggest increases is in police, and I can go into the detail in the next slide. Recreation community services will be a decrease of approximately sixty thousand. Uh, finance, a small decrease of thirty seven thousand. Uh, overall, again, five, about a five hundred fifty seven thousand dollar increase for the prior year amended budget. Further explanation, slide eight, um, again, the five hundred fifty seven thousand dollar increase is approximately four percent over prior year amended budget. Uh, police will be a projection of about six hundred nineteen thousand higher. This is mainly due to uh, M and O uh, related um, increases, benefit increases, including purse cost. Uh, breakdown of this, approximately four hundred thirty thousand dollars in salaries and benefits. Uh, approximately seventy nine thousand dollars for material supplies and services, projecting a hundred ten thousand dollars increase in overtime, this is in the patrol division. And and this also includes, important to note, vacant positions, um, which we'll discuss further um, on that in that area. And then recreation community services will be approximately sixty thousand dollar lower. Uh, this is mainly due to reductions in the cost for the special events for Race on the Base and uh, for the Fourth of July event that are being projected. And also important to note, there's no general fund expenditures planned for the C I P. Moving on to slide nine. There's been some regulatory responses and impacts from this already. We've seen uh, as for the state level, the governor's uh, executive order put in place uh, allowing business to delay their payment of the first quarter sales tax liability. Uh, that was affecting the actual fiscal year nineteen twenty. There'll be a potential uh, windfall to fiscal year nine twenty twenty one for all those businesses if they elect to enter into the installment plan with the state. Uh, that two hundred seventy five thousand that would have been lost in nineteen twenty will be received in fiscal year twenty twenty one. It'll be spread over twelve months, beginning in uh, August of twenty twenty. Also, federal aid, there's been some, obviously the initial rounds of the stimulus aid has seen no allocation to populations to small cities, and some of these populations are greater than five hundred thousand. Uh, we're anticipating additional bills that will allow access for the city. Uh, we've not seen anything yet. And then take advantage of other funding programs as they become available. So on slide ten, the assumptions used are many. Uh, this obviously would remind you, this includes the most updated data from H D L, Beacon Economics, uh, based on their worst case scenario, uh, and includes other assumptions that were built into this as well. Uh, moving forward, slide eleven, uh, the next next step is to incorporate further updates as we receive them and as they are available. Uh, the modeling will be to reflect these changes as we go forward. And we want to then uh, discuss uh, preliminary budget actions. Unless there's any questions, I will turn it over to the city manager.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I if I can at this point, I'd like to to stop and just pause and uh, open to any questions that anyone might have about the numbers and how they were arrived at. I know that there's obviously a number of assumptions that go into that. Uh, just want to point out again that we are trying to be as conservative as we can be, uh, taking into case the worst case scenario and and building our projections and our models off of that. Um, uh, you asked the question at a previous meeting of Craig, uh, if he had ever seen anything with this much fluidity. And I will tell you that I I know I haven't, uh, I know Craig answered that question that he hadn't.
No, I haven't.
Truly are in unprecedented times with regards to what is going on. And I also want to say that this budget, probably more than any in the in past years, is going to be very fluid moving forward too. Uh, there is discussion at the state and at the county level about releasing funding uh, out of the current CARES Act. There is uh, currently legislation that's being negotiated at the federal level uh, with the next round of uh, CARES Act funding, which uh, nobody knows whether or not that ultimately will make it to a vote uh, in the Senate or if it's dead on arrival or if it will uh, be signed by the president. So there's obviously a number of different pieces that are going to fall into place. Um, we also are going to have to take into account any potential changes that come from the state budget um, and any local impacts that it might have as well. So, um, this is all by way of saying that I anticipate that while we will get to an adopted budget uh, before July, um, that it's going to be fluid and we're going to have to revisit it almost constantly to ensure that uh, we're taking into account all the relevant data and that our projections uh, continue to line up. Because uh, obviously there's a, there's a chance that we will have to make a mid-course corrections.
Thank you.
So if there's no question just about uh, how we arrived at the at the current numbers, I I'd like to just go and take a few minutes to talk about kind of the methodology that we've been approaching the budget deficit with and and how exactly uh, the different, I guess, ideas that we've been applying to it are. Uh, with that, Craig, would you mind advancing the slide? So obviously a one point three four seven uh, hole is a is not a small hole, but I believe that uh, through some hard work and some tough choices that we can find ourselves at a balanced budget. Next slide, please. Uh, to basically to go about this, the budget standing committee and staff kind of approached it through four basic tenants. First was reviewing the city's operation in order to determine potential opportunities for cost savings or revenue generation. Uh, the next was.
Uh, the next was assessing our current, uh, personnel allocations and seeing where there might be, uh, some cost savings with regards to reorganizing our current operations. Uh, then from there, we moved into, uh, looking at various positions that we may be able to strategically hold open in order to, uh, achieve some cost savings there. And then the last was to, uh, look and see where it was appropriate, um, where we could actually achieve meaningful savings through budget austerity measures. Um, and that includes anything from, uh, additional cost O and M, but also discussions with, uh, labor unions with regards to how, um, we currently fund our, our operations. Uh, next slide, please. But I'd like to take all of these, one at a time. I'd like to take each one of these one at a time, and I'll be speaking in generalities about each one of these items, uh, simply because there is a conversation that, uh, the city council will need to have in closed session, uh, before getting into the, the details of that. So the first was reviewing potential opportunities for cost savings. Uh, staff did go through and look through, uh, the really significant work that had already been done with regards to the fiscal sustainability plan, uh, testing all those hypotheses, um, trying to see where exactly, um, there might be opportunities to, um, to get a few more dollars here and there. Uh, we have been able to implement a number of those, such as, uh, reducing O and M, looking for opportunities for contracting, and, uh, deferring, uh, large-scale projects in order to maintain our cash flow. Um, as I said, we have implemented some of these in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, which allowed us to bring that budget in, uh, if not completely balanced, uh, very close. Um, there are a number of items in there, though, that, uh, obviously can't be implemented, uh, just by the stroke of a pen. Some of them require, uh, meet for, with the various labor groups, uh, and negotiations with surrounding cities and other agencies, and then ultimately potentially voter approval. Uh, but we are looking and have looked at each and every one of them. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is where we really get into the meat and potatoes of the overall organization. Um, one of the places where, uh, I do see some value and I do see some, uh, cost-saving potential is from a restructuring of the development services and the recreation department. Uh, essentially, what I would propose is, um, moving, uh, the acting deputy director into development services in order to lead that group, and then having, uh, the recreation manager, uh, advanced into the, uh, acting director position there in order to lead that department. Uh, it's a, from just a operational standpoint, uh, gives me a little bit more, um, I guess, coverage in terms of, uh, where I have key people. And then also, um, the goal of this is also to achieve salary savings, and it allows me to achieve a significant amount of savings while having proper management in place and while still, um, allowing us to show a significant, uh, budget reduction. And that move alone, uh, saves us, uh, in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the next was looking at our, um, our work plan, that the items that we'll be doing here in the next year. And really taking a look at the open positions that we have and trying to make sure that we gained a structure that would allow us to be successful in delivering services, but also would allow us to take advantage of some of the salary savings that could be achieved by holding certain positions open. Um, I know that there's typically a, a desire to just to go, okay, we're gonna freeze every position. Um, the fact of the matter is, is that this city has done a great job in the past in holding certain positions open, only feeling when absolutely necessary, and given that, there's very little room left to, um, to make those kind of broad sweeping, um, uh, edicts without really impacting the overall services. And so what we have done as staff, along with the Budget Standing Committee, is go through and take a look at the various positions that we have open and strategically chosen the ones that we think that we can hold open, that will have the smallest amount of impact on our overall operations and allow us to continue to deliver the services that our residents have, uh, come to expect. Um, obviously, uh, what I'm trying to achieve as well is a certain amount of flexibility so that we're able to address new needs, because there will be new needs, uh, as we start to, uh, embrace the new normal. And so we want to make sure that we're not putting people into positions that we either no longer need or a function that we no longer need. Um, this obviously is, uh, far-reaching, would touch every department. There's no one that would, uh, you know, be unscathed in this, and so each of the operational departments are obviously giving up a lot in order to, uh, make these changes. And, uh, I think that's an important kind of point to, to land on as well, is that while I find the, the proposal that I will make to the city council, uh, to be workable for the twenty-twenty-one year, um, I liken it to running a car in the, in the yellow or in the red. Um, you do it for too long and it just falls apart. So this is something that I think can be sustained for the short term, but, uh, obviously will need to be revisited, um, as we go throughout the year. Um, and I will say, again, freezing these positions and reassigning some of the work allows us to achieve a fairly significant savings, uh, right around the million-dollar mark. Next slide, please. And then the next is to take a look at some of the different, um, austerity measures that we can put into place to close that final gap. Um, largely, this revolves around, um, the furloughed employees that we already have within Public Works, which is, you know, around eighty percent or so of those hours, which have been reduced. Um, other salary savings by staggering the hiring of, uh, different positions throughout the year, so that we're able to accomplish a little bit of cost savings. And then lastly, the, uh, probably most significant and probably most impactful to our employees, again, is a discussion with, uh, the various unions about ways that we deliver service and, uh, the potential of cost savings that we can, can achieve through that. Um, next slide, please. And so with that, that, uh, pretty much ends our, uh, our budget presentation in this form. Um, obviously, we wanted to make sure that we gave you a, a broad picture of the, uh, the hurdle that we need to get over and the, the things that we are thinking about, um, in order to get over that. Uh, I will say that from a, just from a strategic standpoint, I, I see this, this budget as being a bunch of, uh, tactical decisions that we're going to need to make while we go into next year and start to address the new normal, and then start to make strategic decisions about where exactly we want to end up at the end of, uh, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, with that, uh, obviously, uh, open to any questions. No questions yet? Okay. City Attorney, do you want to bring us into closed session?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn at a closed session to discuss items twelve A through C as listed on tonight's agenda.